Good evening, I'm Nina Kaplan and I've been in this Gilderland School District for 20 years. I have three children spanning three different stages of education and both my husband and I are educators. Um, I've taught social studies for 21 years in the South Colony School District, and that's provided me with incredible insight to education. I've served in various leadership roles, including a currently a building representative for the South Colony Teachers Association. I'm on the steering committee for the DEI, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee in Gilderland. I'm also the Chair of the Early Childhood Education Committee at Ohap Shalom. Um, additionally, I serve as an education specialist at with the New York State Department of Education Office of Assessment. So I'm running for a position for the school board because I want to establish support systems within schools buildings. I feel that um everyone within the school system can benefit from support systems of all types. Um, I want to build bridges between families in the school district. I feel that opening ways of communication and understanding is essential. And um third, I want to support policies that foster equity in education. I feel that's a big area that we need to focus on. My experience um teaching and co-teach classrooms, which I currently teach in, and advocating for my own children um has given me direct insight into the challenges faced in special ed today. These include advocating for academic programming such as hiring social workers, TAs and teachers that meet the needs of every student. I'm dedicated to ensuring that every student receives the support and resources they need. I also sort support the presence of bringing in therapy dogs, recognizing the positive importance they have on student well-being. I'm committing to implementing the DEI committee is working on a climate survey and I'm looking forward to seeing what those results end up being. So I'm looking forward to seeing how those can help to foster understanding within the diverse school community that we are in, um just to ensure safety and well-being for all of our students and faculty and staff. I'm eager to work collaboratively to build a brighter future for our school district and our children, and thank you for considering me in this role.
Thank you. And next up, we have Tara Malloy-Groky.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Tara Malloy-Groky. My husband Tony and I have three children, our two sons Connor and Sean are Gilderland grads, and our daughter Claire is in 11th grade at Gilderland High School. I am retiring this June after 31 years of teaching. I began teaching in Central Harlem District 5 in 1993, where I worked for three years. Then my husband and I moved to the Capital Region in 1996. I was hired in Gilderland at that time, first as a long-term sub and then a classroom teacher. I've worked at Gilderland Elementary School for the last 28 years where I taught grades 2, 3, 4, and 5. Um, I've served on several building and district committees. Some are like the APPR Committee, Science and Social Studies Cabinet, Young Authors, Fun Fridays, and I handed out COVID tests to the community in sub-zero winter weather. I am currently on the DEI Committee for uh the Gilderland Elementary School, and I find a lot of satisfaction in that work. I'm also an active member of my union, the Gilderland Teachers Association. Over 18 years, I served as building rep, vice president, and then president. When I was president, I worked with teachers, TAs, and administrators in all seven buildings, as well as district office administrators, the superintendent, and the Board of Education. I have experience with how the district works as a whole. I worked with a diverse group of people, and we all worked very hard at finding common ground so that we could move forward. I'm running because I want to get back to the community that has given me and my family so much. I have been a public school advocate at the local and state level with New York State United Teachers for over 20 years, and I want to continue this advocacy work in my, I call it my retirement era, a little Taylor Swift thing in there, as a member of the Gilderland School Board. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Nat Don again.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh Altima Enterprise for hosting uh this tonight. I want to first of all say sorry for coming on a little bit late. It's busy downstairs. Lines of lines of people are coming in, and if you see me leave at 7:30, don't get offended. I, I gotta get back to helping. I want to first of all say I'm very blessed to be running for school board. It's a high honor to get to run for serving our community. I always say uh as a man of faith, that there's no better calling than service to others, and especially our uh students of the district. Uh President Biden and Vice President Harris, often I hear them say are our leaders of tomorrow or our young leaders. And every time I hear those words, I think in my head, well, we have to help those become leaders. And how we do that is by ensuring that they have the resources and tools that are essential to their success in the 21st century, and I look forward to doing that work on the Board of Education. And I really look forward to hearing all these wonderful candidates' ideas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Floyd-Mon.
Hi, uh I'm Elizabeth Floyd-Mon. Uh, I grew up in Gilderland, went to Gilderland Schools, um Gilderland Elementary, Farnsworth, Gilderland High School. Uh, then I went away for some years, went to college and graduate school, and then I went and lived in Japan for 15 years. Uh, speak Japanese, have a masters in in Japanese. Um, and uh, so I, then I came back to Gilderland. I I began working as a reporter. Um, so I I have bring of of broad perspective, a worldview to to this, you know, to life in Gilderland. Um, and um, I'm curious about the world. I'm interested in people different from myself enough that I would go and live somewhere else that is completely different from everything I knew. Um, so as of when I came back here and began writing um for The Times Union as a freelance reporter, and then later for the Altima Enterprise as a full-time reporter, um, I um, I, let me just say, when I, so I I began writing for those newspapers. And in in when I worked for the Altima Enterprise, I my beat was Gilderland. So I was always writing stories about the school district, the town government, and local people who were doing interesting things, and that gave me a really deep understanding of the issues that affect people's lives here in Gilderland. Also, um, I think as a former reporter, I am good at asking questions and at making things transparent. Um, I've also worked before as a book editor, and in all those kinds of roles, basically what you're doing is trying to figure out what things are 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 missing in the information that you're providing. So what questions would readers be asking? Um, what needs to be made clearer? And I think one thing that the school district um continues, always continues to need, any school district continues to need, is transparency and good communication. So I think that that background would be very good for we're serving on the board. I also um also uh was on the DEI Committee for three years uh from the inception of the committee. So the first two years, it's a two-year um term on the committee, but um since it was the beginning of the committee, they wanted some people to stay on. They wanted volunteers to stay on and serve longer. So I say I stayed on and did three years. That was um until the end of last year. So this seems like a kind of natural progression. I'm really interested in trying to help the district realize its goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, there are so many uh areas that we can do better in, in in terms of serving all of our different kinds of students, including, you know, people in uh special education program and um economically disadvantaged students. So I think that um as well as all of our groups and people think of when they think of DEI, like, you know, people of color um and the LGBTQ community. So um it, I would, I would be really interested to be part of this really difficult work of trying to figure out all these competing needs and how they can best all be represented in the budget, which is always a really difficult job, I think, um, and requires people to ask a lot of hard questions and and work together collaboratively. So um, I would really like to be part of that and um and also of just, you know, looking for ways that we can be better at representing all the different voices in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Blanca Gonzalez-Parker.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, I am Blanca Gonzalez-Parker. I started on the school board in uh 2020. It was a tumultuous time to begin. Um, and I was very much a part of responding to the pandemic and helping the school uh deal with all the curveballs that were um sort of tossed our way. I am a Gilderland graduate, 1996, not to date myself, but my husband is 1992, so he's officially four years older. Um, we have three children. We have um, our oldest went to Gilderland through eighth grade and then began college early at age 14, and I have a high schooler and a student in middle school. Um, all of my in-laws also live here in my family and my extended family. We all decided to stay in Gilderland. When I graduated high school, I began um volunteering as an emergency medical technician in town, and I've always sort of kept a toe in the pool, if you will, of volunteering during the pandemic. I um reactivated as part of the Albany County Medical Reserve Corps, and I was a vaccinator in our schools as well as at the state pods around at Crossgate Mall and New Albany. In terms of education, my background is in public health. I have um also a nurse. And um I have a graduate certificate in pandemic preparedness and disease surveillance, which I didn't think I would need as much as we did uh in 2020. Uh, currently, I work for the state of New York, and I work for the New York State and CSA Partnership for Education Training, and I specialize in safety and health training. I've been with the state for about eight years. Um, so I've been on the board, like I said, since 2020, and I feel that I have demonstrated that I am committed. I have, I pride myself on being accessible. I am the board member that you can chat with in the aisle of the grocery store. I have been stopped there several times. Um, also, um parking lots, sidelines, I sort of pride myself on being accessible and being respectful and also seeking information. To Elizabeth's point, it is important to have transparency. It is important to uh sort of dot your i's and cross your t's and have all the information necessary to make decisions that we vote on that impact everybody in the community. I try to do that without stepping on anyone's toes and maintaining a respectful um dialogue with folks, and I really strive to be part of a team player. You may notice, if you look at my voting record, I have not always agreed with everything on the board, but we have always ended everything amicably, and I think that is a strength that I have. So in short, I would like to continue to serve in my role as a Board of Education member because I feel like there's more work to be done in the area of DEI and also to improve our facilities, make our staff want to stay with us, make our students and our families want to stay with us. I think we are uh on the road to greatness, but there's still more work to be done. So I would like the opportunity to continue that. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, the first question, excuse me, is something I think every single one of you has mentioned. The topic is DEI, and the last time I did this forum, there was a great divide, but I'm anticipating from your introductions that it won't be. Every spring for the last several years, students at Gilderland High School have organized an anti-hate rally. Last year, several transgender students bravely spoke of the harassment they had suffered in school and out. In 2022, the district created a post for Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and the school board has a DEI Committee addressing issues revolving around race, religion, sexual orientation, ethnicity, and more. Is this a good use of district energies and resources? And should the district be doing more to help students who are feeling hurt or isolated? If so, what? And if not, why not? And we're starting where we left off with Blanca.
Okay, I was just trying to jot that down. You're right, that was a robust question. Um, so I think the crux of it was um is DEI work a good use of resources? And the answer to that is yes, of course, we need all of our students to feel comfortable in order to learn. It is also a requirement on behalf of the state. We need to be inclusive. Um, and I do feel that we have made great strides. I'm very proud to have been part of the vote that established the DEI Committee, also that hired uh Matt Pinchenot. I have served on the DEI Committee. I currently serve. More than that, I've also, I was one of the people that spearheaded the idea for the um Student Voice Committee, which is a subcommittee of the DEI. I believe that our students uh need a place that they can come, a safe space, and talk to us about the issues that are impacting them. In terms of the students um who were bullied and um are trans students that came forward and spoke about their experiences, we have taken that seriously. I was also on the policy committee. I still am, but I was part of the um anti-hate policy that was written. So we are, you know, making strides. It's, there's still more work to be done. It is definitely worth the time and the effort, but it is also our moral and legal obligation to do so. That's my opinion.
Thank you. And we're going to move to you next, Nina.
Thank you. So I I I echo that. Um, this is definitely an absolutely essential piece of um what the district offers is the DEI Committee. Um, I am very much supportive of the way that the district handles the DEI Committee. I love and respect the way that they reach out to the parents and the community members because it demonstrates an interest to engage that uh role of a collaborative effort. Um, um, in terms of the specific questions that you asked about, um, absolutely, the school district has an obligation to ensure that there's safety for the students as well as the faculty and everyone involved in the district. Um, US government continues to uphold these rules, for example, expanding Title IX to accommodate um sexual harassment in other areas where students have felt scared or a sense of not feeling safe. I think that um we continue to show the importance of that as a district, that we have zero tolerance for anyone feeling that they, because of who they are, whether it's gender, race, or any other circumstances, are not comfortable being who they are. We have to obviously continue to follow through with the decisions that are being made because that's where it becomes the tricky part, is coming up with a policy, but making sure it's being followed through is where it gets difficult. I like to hear that we're moving towards putting an office into the high school so that students have a way to access um support because that's the biggest issue. We have a very large district. It offers amazing opportunities for students, but with that, sometimes students can feel lost or unseen. So by having faculty and staff to do that for them, it's very important. I know as a teacher, I open my classroom throughout the day. I have my students coming in during my lunch every time of the day because that's when they need us the most, and I'm glad to hear that the DEI Committee is opening up to students during those times as well.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Tara.
Hi, so I'd like to piggyback on um several things that Blanca and Nina have just said. I am full support of the DEI funds being used for that. Um, what more can we do? Um, I'm thinking like at at the um elementary level, I think what we need perhaps are like more counselors to come down there and talk, because we do have families um with two moms or two dads, and sometimes kids are getting teased at lunch, and just have the understanding of like, all families are different. Love is love. Love is a family. It's a great book. Um, so we have like some things like that, and you know, and teachers do take care of it immediately. But I just feel like with some students, we're just not an understanding of, you know, accepting people. Like, your family doesn't look like my family, like just accepting differences. So we do need, I feel, to do more work on that, and I'm just speaking from the the um elementary level. I feel very strongly that um, so I'm thinking about the transgender students, um, just having a place to go where they feel safe. They need to feel safe. Everybody needs to feel safe and supported. Everyone needs a place to go to to talk. Um, so I feel like we, it's a very good use of district funds um in anything we can do just to help the elementary level, I'm I'm thinking. And it could just, you know, it could just be my, in my opinion, um, it's just to make a better understanding for for students because we talk a lot about being future-ready, but to be future-ready, we need to be ready for this global world that we're facing and all these different ethnicities and all these different family structures. And it's a great way to start at the uh elementary level to get kids ready for this world that they're going to be facing.
Thank you. And Nat, you're up next.
Thank you. Let me just first of all say I proudly support our LGBTQI-plus community, our Black community, our AAPI, and of course, as a fellow Latino, Latino Puerto Ricans and all that. I'm very proud of the dis- the progress of this district. From the moment when I came into high school, I can recall inclusion not being a word in the vocabulary. And I remember being on many committees, starting the work on inclusion, whether it was Global Impact Talent, Students for Inclusion, or even work on the student government. It took time for the district to get to where we are now. I want to continue to move the district forward. That's why I'm running. We have to make sure our LGBTQ students feel welcome, that they have the services that they need to feel safe. I'm proud of the work, not just in the district, but the state and federal government that they have done to address this issue. Like I heard from candidates about the Title IX reform, the Title 19 reform that was just done as well. I believe we have to do a lot of work to ensure that each and every student succeeds. That means their mental abilities, that means their physical, and that means their wellness. So they can all succeed in all that they do. Like I said, I'm a proud supporter of DEI. I'm very proud of what this district has done, and with that, I continue to look forward to continuing that work on the board. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm proud of the work that Gilderland has done. I think Gilderland has been a leader in this area. Um, in, you know, the suburban council um in this area of DEI. I um, we were one of the first to have a DEI director. And um, I was on the the DEI Committee when we uh started to, you know, to work towards hiring a a director of DEI and uh was part of the uh one of the people that urged the school to, you know, think outside the box in trying to hire someone. Um, we were um encouraging the uh people that were writing the advertisement for the DEI director to um, you know, not just look for the usual kind of, you know, education bureaucrat, um, that administration bureaucrat person, but, you know, make the ad be very um wide open and say, okay, if you have experience as an administrat- administrator, that's great. You know, if you have a master's degree in in education, great. Maybe you have uh experience working in a corporate environment or in an academic environment, or, you know, um certainly your experience in working with diverse populations is going to be crucial. So I think the um our, we we tried to encourage the school district to make the ad be very inclusive um so that we would cast a wide net and get interesting people. And um certainly we did um get someone great, you know, Matt Pinchenot. Um, and um, I want to continue to try to do this work, which is so, it's so vast. I mean, um, one of the things that needs to be, can, we need to continue to do and um is to try to find, look for, search for more faculty members who match the changing demographic of the students. Um, the students um now, in in anyway, 2022 to 23, were 70% Caucasian and 30% other. So um mixed race, Black, Asian descent, um Native American, uh Latino, Hispanics. Um, all of those other groups make up 30% of the student population, so that's huge. But we have only people of color as educators or faculty or staff in our schools that are like a handful. I mean, probably five or less. I mean, so few. So um, well, we have two now DEI directors, so that's, that's great. Um, that probably increases it by about 25%, but I mean, um, so we, we can do so much more, and we are trying to. We, um, I think our DEI directors have um tried to work with DEI directors around this suburban council to convince people to try to to move to this area. Um, we can do more with encouraging young people in our schools to think about becoming teachers, which during the pandemic, obviously, was proved to be one of the most difficult jobs in the world, along with medical professionals. Um, so there's a lot that we can do. Um, there are a lot of students that are living in economic difficulty uh and, you know, unable to have the same kind of experience that other students are because they're not able to stay after school for um, you know, to take part in the musical or some kind of sports because they need to take care of their younger brothers and sisters, you know. We need to figure out ways that we can make everybody have the same, you know, able to have the same kind of rich experience as other people. Um, working, you know, within, working around the the limitation, the the constraints that they have in their, in their lives to help them to thrive just as much as any other student. So, so um, yeah, I think um for me, the the world that we're working toward is one where everybody is, you know, no one is the, no one is the, no one is the host and other people are the the ones who are welcomed in. It's not like, it's not like the the Caucasian students are saying, okay, you can come in now and you can be part of this and we'll welcome you. But it's like, everybody is completely equal. Um, the LGBTQ students, the um, you know, people of color, the people with economic dis- you know, disadvantaged backgrounds, everybody is just working together, I know, all together at the same table. No one is more equal than anybody else. So that's, I think, what we're working toward. And it's, it's vast because there are so many small, tiny problems that can, are revealed when you sort of, you know, look closely. So, so that's one, yeah, I, for me, it's, it's extremely valuable work and it's necessary so that each person can learn and thrive and become everything they can become. That's the goal.
Great. Our next question is on state initiatives. Gilderland, like other districts in New York, has no choice but to meet requirements or initiatives set by the state. Two, Gilderland is currently wrestling with are electric buses and pre-kindergarten classes. Starting in 2027, schools must purchase only electric buses, and by 2035, all school buses must be zero emissions. The state has allocated unasked-for funds for universal pre-K to Gilderland for several years, some of which the district cannot use, since there are not enough spaces in local out-of-school programs. So an annual lottery is held. The question is, how should Gilderland deal with these and other state initiatives? And I'm going to start this time with you, Matt, because I just saw your email that you have to leave very shortly.
Uh, first of all, I'm also running because I want to create a more greener school district, and I'm thankful for New York State's programs. This climate's changing. We're living in climate change. I believe the United States, and the research shows, the United States Department of State and the UN shows, by 2040, uh, climate change is going to be even more devastating than what it is now. And we need to address it now so we can prepare for the future. Always talk about being future-ready. I also think it shouldn't be for students being future-ready. I think it's for all of us to be future-ready. Uh, green buses. I believe all of our roofs of our school buildings should be solar. I believe our more older buildings, like the high school and middle school, and some elementary schools need to have uh, I forgot the name of it, on the tip of my tongue, but it's a specific window uh that uh blocks green emission to get in. I believe there's so much work to do that we need to do. Students are breathing in toxins. That scared me when I read that. Breathing in toxins on school buses. Uh, Vice President Harris said that in one of our me- in one of the meetings I watched. That scared me. We have to address greener buses now, so our students, because it impacts the way our students think. And we want our students to succeed, and that's what we have to do. So I'm for a greener district, and I'm glad New York is making the motion by 2030. I hope we can see it sooner than 2030, but I do have to go, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the candidates. Thank you, and have a good night.
That's you.
So we'll move to Elizabeth next.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, yeah, I am uh in favor of getting the two electric school buses this year that are proposed. Um, we would be taking advantage of uh funding programs that would allow us to basically buy them for nothing because we would be reimbursed for the cost. So this is a great time, the the great time, to buy those two buses and start to find out for ourselves what the problems are and how to deal with them. Certainly, we've seen other um people have issues sometimes with uh electric buses where there are recalls, there are repairs. Um, so there are unexpected things that might Um, so there are unexpected things that might happen. There are lack of, uh, you know, uh, parts to buy that are, you know, needed parts. Um, so there can be, I think, problems down the road, but we need to get into the fray and start to work towards this goal, which is, uh, obviously, I mean, it, it's late even to start this. We should have started this a long time ago. If we, you know, want to have a world to hand off to our children and our grandchildren. I mean, we've got to start moving as fast as possible. So this is, this is a small ask to have two electric buses. It's not huge. And they will be reimbursed. So we need to begin to look in, you know, find out for ourselves what the challenges with it are. Um, so I think we absolutely need to buy those buses and to make sure that the taxpayers know that this cost will be reimbursed to the school district. So, um, the other thing, the universal pre-K, I think it's great and I, I would like to continue the work that the school board has tried to do and Dr. Wiles has tried to do, which is, um, convince other districts in the state uh, that we should link this to, um, to income. Because I think that someone who is, you know, couch surfing with their children at friends' homes, who's, we have homeless students in our district, we have people who are single parents working on a small income, um, need this more than somebody who's living in an eight hundred thousand dollar house. So I think that it should be linked to income. We can't do it by ourselves because it's, it, it's a state rule. So we need to be able to change the rule and link it to income. And I think that would be a really good thing to do. Childcare is really expensive and not everybody can afford it.
Thank you. And next we're going to hear from Blanca Gonzalez Parker.
Thank you. I am going to piggyback on some of the comments that were made. I'll start with the electric school buses. Um, so I think the answer to the question is that we need to advocate for more time to, uh, make the purchase of replacing our entire fleet. We simply cannot afford it. Yes, there was reimbursement this year, um, and so the two buses make sense. I'm on the committee, I'm on the business practices committee. And originally the plan was ten. We simply do not have enough money upfront for that. Additionally, we don't have the infrastructure. And we also, our mechanics need to be trained on how to care for those buses. So it's really very complicated. So, um, the reimbursement, we don't know if that is going to continue. So the two buses make sense for this year. We can't handle more than two, like I said, because of the infrastructure required. So I think, um, the answer is that we need to advocate for more time. We need to advocate for, um, reimbursement, federal reimbursement and state reimbursement. And, um, we need to learn from our districts around us, like Bethlehem, who have already made purchases, run into barriers, um, and complications. Let's see here. I took some notes. Um, and in terms of infrastructure, quite honestly, that is something that also requires space. So we may reach a point where we simply don't have the, the space and we'll have to build. And so there should be, in my opinion, federal and state reimbursements for that piece as well. Not just the buses, but the infrastructure. It's, it's really, really quite costly and involved. Um, each one of these buses, for instance, if they were to catch on fire, it takes days to put out the, um, battery. And so there are certain safety requirements in terms of spacing. So the garages that we have now couldn't even like house all of the electric buses. So I think we need to ask for more time. We need to ask for some more financial assistance. I am pro-changing the fleet. I also would, uh, you know, I think we need to work on our, um, our footprint. Uh, but we, we have to do it in a way that we can afford and something that's going to work. So, um, I think we need to fix that legislation, if I'm being quite honest. Okay, UPK, I think we also need to advocate that the, um, as Dr. Wells has said several times, that we need to link it to, um, income. Uh, also, I think the short answer is since we don't have enough space physically, we don't, you know, right now we're, we have churches who, who take our UPK students, which is wonderful. But I think a more immediate solution, which was also Dr. Wild's idea, is to maybe work with BOSIs or formulate some sort of cooperative with other schools, um, in the area. I think we're going to have to just help each other because we can't afford to build on right now. Um, so again, that's something else we would need to advocate for. And, um, one, one other thing we need to advocate for, UPK sounds great, just like the buses at face value, you're going to get all this reimbursement. But there, um, if you've been following at all the, um, discussion on our float nurse, for instance, you know, there are requirements where all of those UPK students need to be screened, but there's no funding for that. So we're taking our, our school nurses who are already overwhelmed and they have to now handle all that screening. And so just so you know, the life of a school nurse is not easy. The pandemic may be over, but the responsibility is that they had before they're catching up on. And now they have these new ones with the UPK students. So at face value, the legislation seems like it's this wonderful thing, but just like the buses, the nitty-gritty, in my opinion, needs some work and some fine tuning.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now Nina Kwan.
So I just want to say that, um, having Blanca on the, on the panel is extremely, you know, helpful and insightful because looking at all the different factors that go into running or being on the board, um, you know, face, being faced with all of these wonderful ideas and, and, um, initiatives, obviously, the, the constant balance of having to work within budgetary confinement presents its issues. So, um, much of what, um, the, the panel has said, I'm going to echo. Yes, of course, I support, um, health for our children and the world. Um, but logistically, being able to implement that is the question. Um, the state coming forward with the money to, to supply for the new buses. But yes, the logistics of how long it takes for that, for the plugin, for the new technology to accommodate that and where that would take place. Um, not to mention the transportation, um, system as it is, is really down to a science. So having to accommodate the amount of time that it would take for all those different factors, if there are other issues that come up with the, with the buses as well. For example, if there's a, a problem with the mechanism, um, it does definitely put the district at disadvantage of getting the students to school and those sorts of things. So a hundred percent I'm behind it. Um, but I think there's going to be a long road ahead of us before that's actually put into effect. Um, and I think that those things would come from the state to do that. Or, um, in the, the highway department to figure that out because, um, schools have other areas that we're also focusing on, such as the, the, the benefit of the students within the building. This is absolutely a school issue. However, to get it fully implemented is going to be, uh, an expense. Um, regarding universal pre-K as a teacher and also, as I said, as the chair of an early childhood program, I absolutely understand the benefits that, um, students have from having pre-K. Um, the students that are, are economically disadvantaged unfortunately come into our buildings without having the very basic psychological, social, emotional, fine motor skills, gross motor skills that kids need to be successful. And they're already going to be set back from the beginning. I believe that our district is now at about twenty-four percent economically disadvantaged. So, um, looking at that as factors and even families that are not in that category, um, the cost of childcare, early childcare is very, very difficult, um, if you can't afford that. So universal pre-K absolutely is necessary. Um, working in, um, South Connie, we've had it for many years as well. I'm aware of how difficult it is to accommodate that and to make it as fair as we can. Obviously, the lottery system is the initial attempt, but I agree that those families that are of most need should also have that, that benefit given to them because, um, we want to make sure that our students have that equity given to them, which is one of the areas that I, I one hundred percent agree that is an ongoing effort to achieve.
Thank you. And finally, we have Tara Malloy-Grock.
Um, hi, I, I agree with many of the things that have been spoken about already. Um, I would like to talk about some advocacy work. I know at NICE, the New York City United Teachers, we've been talking about electric buses. And yes, we want a green world. Yes, we have got to, you know, you know, get rid of these emissions and everything. But the issues that we talked about with things that Blanca mentioned, infrastructure and the bus mechanics need to be cha, you know, trained. Um, there were some issues out in the Midwest where it got very, very cold and then the electric buses weren't working. So we do have a lot of things that we need to work through. So I totally support advocating to extend it. Like we can't, we just got to make sure we do it right because it's very expensive. And we, we want to make sure that, um, that we're going to be smart about it and that it, it's the right thing. We know it's the right thing to do, but we just have to be smart about it as we approach this. I do support the two electric buses in the budget. I think that's a great way to start. I know, uh, somebody had mentioned Bethlehem, um, has buses, I think, you know, and going to them and talking to them. They were actually talking to us at NICE about the whole thing with the infrastructure and having to plug the buses in and then making sure that your buildings can support all of that. So there's a lot that goes into it, but I do support it. I just don't, I don't think that it should be rushed. I think we need to talk to the state and just say, look, we need more time with this. And just to, we have to be smart about it. Um, UPK, I'm a advocate for that as well. We've been advocating for that for many, many years. I love the idea of it being linked to, um, to income because, you know, like everything Nina said, I totally agree with. And I see kids all the time. I teach second grade. You know, you know which kids didn't get UPK. You could just see it. You know, and with the, the, the cutting and coloring and just all that fine motor, the social interaction too is just so important, you know, and, and a lot of our students really need that work. And I would love talking, you know, advocating with BOSIs. If we could do something like cross-districts, I mean, Gilderland is so spread out. I know like, I have friends who live in Bethlehem, but they go to Gilderland schools. Maybe there's something we could do with Bethlehem, uh, or even like Rotterdam, something. I mean, I'm sure there's something that we can do and we go to BOSIs and say, hey, let's just, you know, put our brains together. Let's work on this together. And what can we do to help advocate for these children and this family? So, I agree.
Thank you. And now our last question is on budgeting. The federal funds that Gilderland received because of the pandemic will no longer be in play. The district funded some of those services in its proposed one hundred and twenty-five million dollar budget for next year, but not others, like a floating nurse, an on-staff nurse to fill in as needed. At the same time during this budget season, parents of special educational students at the high school spoke repeatedly to the school board about needs they felt weren't being met. While an extra comprehensive skills class was added, parents said their kids felt isolated and unwelcome. The district has never gone over the state's tax cap since it was adopted over a decade ago. And in recent years has screened its reserve for tax sorcery. So this, having had to pay by hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the question is, as a board member, what would be your priorities in answering these competing needs? And would you recommend going over the tax cap? And we're going to start with Elizabeth Floyd May.
Um, I would not recommend going over the tax cap because if, um, if the vote does not succeed, it, it then needs to be a super majority. And if it doesn't go through, if the budget is not adopted, then, um, the, the amount has to stay the same as the previous year. Um, and that would be pretty difficult. So, um, so I would not recommend going over the tax cap because it's just kind of uncharted, uncharted waters. Um, I, I wonder if it might be possible next year, the coming year, to have, um, one of the four unassigned full-time equivalent people be the float, uh, the, the floating nurse. Because, um, I was definitely convinced by the nurses that came to the board meetings and talked about, um, the need for the floating nurse to know the students and for them to know the floating nurse. Um, that there's just, uh, a lot of, um, she, she, there are students with diabetes, for instance, who have to go in to see her several times a day and she has to be able to make recommendations for, you know, what, what, how much medicine they should take right then, based on what they'd just eaten. And she need, if she knows those kids and knows their situation, it's very helpful as opposed to just being a person who's been called there all of a sudden from, you know, some pool of floating nurses. So I, I think that's really important. And, um, if we can fund that, uh, somehow, I think it's really important. And I think that, um, a lot of what the special education parents are asking for is more transparency, um, more communication from the district, um, and more of a voice. Um, so it isn't necessarily that they're just asking for more hiring. Um, but I think they're asking for more, um, information back and forth between them and the district. And that, that should be something that's doable. The district is trying to do that. Um, it's had a meeting with, um, with them. And so hopefully they'll continue going in that direction. Um, so that, you know, people aren't saying to the board things like, you know, my son was very happy during middle school and now he's miserable in, in high school, um, the things that we've heard at meetings recently. So, um, I think that that would, um, we need to continue to try to work closely with those parents and families so that, um, things do improve. And, um, about the tax sorcery, I would just like to say that, um, you know, I hope that Cross Gates en, enjoys its five million dollars from the school district. And, um, I think that if Cross Gates wants to, uh, prove that it's a good neighbor and a good member of this community, it should consider, you know, the, the, the company that, you know, Pyramid should consider, um, you know, giving back to the school district in some way, shape or form. You know, perhaps they could, uh, create a scholarship fund or they could support, uh, academic programming in some way, um, that, you know, s- since they are benefiting so much and the students are not benefiting as a result of the four point seven million that needs to be returned to them, uh, starting this year. So I would, um, you know, it's spread over ten years through a loan. But, you know, I, I would, I would recommend that they try to proactively do something to help offset that.
Thank you. Blanca Gonzalez Parker, you're up next.
Uh, if you think you can convince them, Elizabeth, but I'd like to see that happen. Um, okay, so, beginning with the competing priorities. I also agree that the, um, nurse, if we have the funds, would be, um, one of the first things that we should add off of our wishlist. There are, at times, you know, um, folks will retire early or there will be different reasons wha, when we have suddenly a little bit of extra money and maybe we can make the float nurse happen. Unfortunately, um, you may recall that I asked for a cost comparison. And so the, it is cheaper by a lot to have a agency nurse. And so my heart and my mind tell me that absolutely we want to keep our float nurse to the benefit of our students. But then at the same time, it's, I think it's, there's almost like a seventy-five thousand dollar difference. I'm just estimating here. Um, so it's hard to, you know, it's hard to be able to do that right now thanks to these tax sorcery issues. So it's, it's all very much intertwined. And so I, I am a nurse. I am all in for the importance of having consistency. But at the same time, I'm responsible to the taxpayers and we have one heck of a problem right now financially. So, um, I am, I am torn with that. I'll be honest with you. I am hopeful because it has happened on almost every issue that I have, you know, crossed my fingers on. We will have some extra money and then we will be able to make this happen. But even at that point in time, we're going to have to make a comparison. We do need more aides, especially for special needs, uh, students. Our, our families do also want, um, in a, you know, besides having their children feel included, they, they do want more hands in the classroom. So we have to balance those needs and so it will be a difficult decision. Um, in terms of the, um, special ed parents who have come forward, I actually, if I'm re-elected, would like to request the audit committee next year to do an audit of the special education program so that we, um, have a review. I think those can be very helpful. Sometimes information can come out in terms of communication barriers that may, we may not have been aware of. Um, also, I think that the sentiment of my child had a better experience in middle school, uh, that really resonates with me. And I, I think though, that that goes back to our DEI work. So I would like us to, um, redirect some of our attention. We've touched on it a little in the DEI committee, but I think we need to do more. And I think it needs to be a priority so that we're really responding to the community that has come out. Um, and then with regard to going over the tax cap, I've been on the communications committee. Um, I was on it for two or three years, I think two years. And our, our voters do not want us, want us to go over the tax cap. It's also been, um, in the thought exchange, people have said, please do not go over the tax cap. It's also been um in the thought exchange, people have said, please do not go over the tax cap. I personally feel like right now the economy is a disaster and people are struggling left and right and it is highly insensitive. Uh not only to that twenty four percent and rising of students that live in poverty and are even homeless in some instances, but it's disrespectful to the voters who would put us in office. So I would do everything in my power not to go over that. Um sorry, I took some notes. Um Melissa, you have a gift for for heavy questions. Let me just make sure I am uh, let's see, thought exchange. Okay, I think that was, that was pretty much it, the tax cap. Taxpayer tax sorcery. Okay, I I think that's about it. Thank you.
Very good. So we're moving on to Nina Kaplan.
Hi, um thank you. Once again, I feel like I'm echoing a lot of what I'm hearing. Um so as I said earlier, I have tremendous amount of respect for what goes into developing the budget. And I I agree that especially given the times, um working within the confines of a tax cap is necessary. Um the inflationary concerns that have occurred across the nation, the world, don't go unnoticed and are are tremendous factors. So all of these pieces have to be considered when um we go into the areas that the school district um has flexibility in. Um I agree that if we could find a way to use some of that um Cross Gates tax sorcery money, that would be amazing and philanthropist um of of Cross Gates. However, um given the reality of the situation, um I I believe that the 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 um continued plan would be to work with what the the district is allowed to to utilize. I also agree that funding for special ed, special needs is a very essential area. Um on a personal level, um I believe that we can continue to dive deeper into what the district is doing for special ed, special needs. Um I believe that hiring um other professionals or areas to, in that area might might help. But also I think the full, um you know, taking a look at what's going on to make sure that kids' needs are met needs to happen. Um on a, on another scale, I do believe that therapy dogs are a really important valuable asset. We actually have one in our building today and um I had a student today who utilized that um on a personal level and it it's a huge, a tremendous turnaround. I feel that we cannot forget the fact that we're human, we're people. And um and with that comes basic needs that need to be seen. And I feel that as board members, we have an obligation to understand that about the people that we're working with. And and I feel that the board is basically a legislature for the people. And we want to give them a voice to be heard and if it can be done, I want to see that happen.
Thank you. Carol Malloy-Grock, you're closing out this question.
Um I I also agree we should not go over the tax levy limit. Um it's just not a responsible thing to do. I think there are too many potential negative impacts and like everybody talked about inflation and the cost of food and gas and everything. It's just we have to stay within um, you know, the the tax cap. Um the floating nurse, it's just, it's breaking my heart, you know, to that it it has to be the way it is. But I understand, like, I agree with Blanca, when you look at how much it costs compared to the agency. If there's a way we can get the floating nurse back, I would one hundred percent support that to get it back in the budget. Um because when they can't find a nurse and I see somebody from the middle school, the high school in my building, I'm thinking, oh my goodness, the high school, the middle school, they're down a nurse. And it's like, but i- it's just, it's just mind blowing to me that um that that the this is the situation we're in. So if there's any way we can get a floating nurse back, I one hundred percent support that. Um the special ed um parents, I just, my heart really broke for them. And I thought that they were so brave coming forward at the board meetings and advocating for their children. And I didn't even know you could do an audit. I think that's a great idea, Blanca, to do an audit and just to see like what's happening. And it goes back to transparency and communication. Um I have a brother who is special needs and it it's hard, especially for a parent. I feel like sometimes as a teacher, I do teacher talk and people don't know what I'm talking about unless you're a teacher. I feel like with special ed, there are so many needs as well that like you need to be very clear with parents and explain to them what's going on with their child, what can they do, how can we support them? So I do like the idea of um having some kind of of an audit um for us gates. Hmm uh I, for me, and I'm saying shame on me personally. I didn't really pay attention to what was happening at the town board level. I was not really paying attention to the IDAs, you know, and these companies come in and they want all these tax breaks. And I think for me, I need to pay closer attention to that and I think the Board of Education does also. And if we, I don't know, we probably can't get a seat on the board because they're elected officials, but we need to be there at the meetings. We need to know what's going on. We need to ask the questions about, oh, this company's coming in, are they going to pay their school taxes? Why should they not? Why should Pyramid not have to pay school taxes? They're a fourteen billion dollar company. They should pay their school taxes. It's killing me that we have to give four million dollars back to them. And I understand it's the law and the whole thing with the taxes, but they made fourteen billion dollars last year. And now they're going to get four thousand, four million dollars from our students? It's just appalling to me. So my job going forward is I got to pay much closer attention to IDAs. I need to be more vocal about it. And I think the school board also needs to be paying closer attention to those things as well.
Well, thank you all. On these forums, I usually aim for civility. I think we've actually achieved harmony here. Um so you each have a minute for your closing statements. And try to think from the voter's point of view, what distinguishes you because you, you are so harmonious. We're going to start with Carol Malloy-Grock.
Okay, um so I'm asking the community to vote for me because I will bring to the board years, thirty one years of working with hundreds of students and families. I know firsthand the obstacles that teachers, students and families face, as well as the joys and the celebration. And my advocating work through um the state union and my local union as well, I've been able to fight for budgets, fight for um unfair testing, fight for um APPR to make that fair for students. Um I'm not afraid to take on a challenge. I want all students to and staff to have a place where they can feel safe and supported and accepted. Um I will well aware that money doesn't grow on trees and I will, you know, spend the money wisely. And as a board of education member, I'm going to bring all my experiences, all of it, to be an effective and strong voice for everybody.
Thank you. Blanca, you're next.
Okay, um I would like to ask to be reelected to the board because I think that I have uh demonstrated that I am committed to my community. I love my community. I know this town very well. I grew up here. Um I am a parent now, so I I'm living what all of our other parents are living and I have experienced middle school and elementary school as well. Um I have been an advocate. It's, it's always sad to me because I can't discuss what we do in executive session, but we have done some fabulous things in executive session um that that we have voted on and and made big differences for the community and for our students. But my bottom line is that um I respect every member of the community, whether or not they have a different opinion of my own. I have proven that, I have shown that, I am approachable. I've heard from all different sides, um um different issues. And I literally care about our students like they are my own. I take it very, very seriously and very, very much to heart. The turf field, I had very little to benefit from that, but I listened to the parents that came out. Same with our SROs. I learn about issues. Um I take the time to understand everybody's point of view and I try to be empathetic. I also have um a lot of experience in my professional life with school safety and also with um contract negotiations because I worked for a labor management organization. So uh based on all that experience, I feel like I um would love to be reelected and I would continue working hard for everyone. There's still more to be done um and I'm eager to to do that now as vice president. I feel like I have a little bit more responsibility and I can make more positive change. Um I am going to go back to that tax sorcery unless I run out of time. So I would like to advocate for the school board to be aware of the tax increases before they go out to the folks. Some people were were overtaxed or had tax increases to the tune of six hundred percent. If the library board and the school board had seen that, maybe a red flag would have, you know, been raised. But we were not privy to that and we have said, we have made comments and requests publicly, I have during meetings. Gee, next time there's a reassessment, is there any way that the library board and the school board could possibly be at the table? Let's hope that happens. If you're listening, town board, lots of respect for you, but we really need some help moving forward. This cannot happen again. It's hurting our kids.
Thank you. And Elizabeth Floyd May, you're up next.
Okay, um so uh I think I said before, I have deep ties to the community. I grew up here. Um I have lived here for, I guess, a total of thirty three years, um including childhood and then adulthood. Um I have a child in the school who is in tenth grade. Um uh I'm a person who listens carefully and um asks questions and then tries to come up with innovative ideas uh to make things work within uh constraints. And so um I I would like to try to see, especially at this time when we are really stretched so thin, if we can come up with other programs like some of the great ones that the district has created recently. Um one that I wanted to mention was the Each One Teach One uh program, which is um kids in the high school going to the elementary schools. Um so Spanish students in high school going to the elementary school and teaching elementary kids a little bit of Spanish, like every, I guess, every month that they go or every couple of weeks. Um and so the kids have something to look forward to and they learn a little bit of a foreign language and they feel like, you know, they have insight into another culture, which is so great. When I was in fourth grade, we actually had Spanish in Gilderland and so that was awesome. Um you know, it was, it was so fun to learn a language during that period when kids are young and their minds are still open and flexible. There is a window during which you're better able to learn languages. So another thing that's been done recently is um kids from the high school who are studying ASL, American Sign Language, going to the uh elementary school to a deaf and hard of hearing classroom to work with them. And it's just, these kinds of programs are low cost and they are win-win. So they're, they're great for everyone and um, you know, if we can come up with more of those, that will be really helpful. Another thing that I'd like to work on is we're worrying about, thinking about, exploring what we can do more about anti-bullying. Seems like we need to do more. Um when that thing happened recently with the student at the middle school who um uh created a ha- a kill list, um it wasn't discussed much at board meetings, um the public part, nobody commented, no, no member of the public came forward to comment. But I heard um from friends that um the person, the people on that person's list were people who had chronically and incessantly and cruelly bullied that person. I'm not advocating making a kill list, but I'm just saying that the background to that incident seems to have been the person was relentlessly bullied. And so I just wonder if, I know we're doing a lot to try to stop bullying, but isn't there possibly more that we could do? So I'd like to look into that. Um seems like school safety is intrinsic, intrinsically related to um, you know, people feeling valued at school. Um one of the biggest factors, you know, one of the biggest dangers and threats is
Are we agreeing?
The threat from within. Yeah, let me get, let me stop.
Okay, thank you. I was waving my phone too discredibly. That's okay. Closing us out is Nina Kaplan. Thank you.
Thank you. Um so I find much um in the, in the words of the school board itself and I believe that it is a sounding board. And I believe that as an educator for twenty one years, I have seen many things that um have concerned me for parents as well as for students. And I feel that I'm very aware of what it means to be an educator, what it means to be a parent and and within a community. So with that, um I've learned how to advocate for my children and also for my students. And I would love to be able to empower families to be able to do that as well. I also am very much aware of what it takes to run um the the district in terms of financially, trying to keep aware of the limitations as we discussed. My experience working for State Ed, New York State Ed, um has broadened my understanding of educational policy and academic development. The changes with the New York State Regents and the programs and how we're aware of where our children are today and the new pathways that have been looked at as options for students really are important to recognize, especially given the fact that many of our students are still not where they might be were it not for the COVID so um social, emotional affects that that came into play. I feel that we should um keep in mind that when we make policies, that we have students in mind. And I feel we need to have families in mind. And I feel that as a board member, I would be collaborative and listen to the other board members and their thoughts and work together to really create um the best environment and educational atmosphere and opportunities for our students.
Well, thank you all very much and I appreciate your making democracy strong, sharing your views and you can read about yourself in the Thursday's paper.